Okay, now we're good. Welcome.
So let's just go right down to our Utah. To Utah and not work.
Do this thing.
All right, so as you all just heard in the regular meeting, we are working with RSL to host the opening weekend of the Tour of Utah. And I'm so excited about it.
Oh wait, I forgot the public team was to interject about the monarchs. One, two.
Western.
Western.
That was fantastic.
Yes, they'll pay in on Sunday. We're gonna talk about that in City Manager update.
Sorry.
She's coming in and looking at my paperwork.
I was.
Just doing things in the wrong.
Can't leave it out.
Right, that's why I would pay my.
Sorry. So as you all know, when I was out of town and couldn't speak to you, John Lindsay came and told you about their grand idea, RSL and Deloitte's idea of hosting this opening weekend. And so we got some nods from some of you and we submitted for a letter of intent to the Tour of Utah to host the opening stage. They are going to award their whoever won their stages on November 22nd. And then they'll start doing public notices in January. So we'll have some time for Tammy's group to work with their group for the social media stuff and the videoing and all that stuff. And then we'll start really hitting the ground running. Now, January through July 2020, you see planning, 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 planning. There's also therapy in there, but it's just not in that box. But we're all gonna, we're all gonna survive it together. If we are awarded the stage, Cody is going to be the lead contact for the actual route itself and how we police it and shut it down and all those things. And then my group will be the lead on the actual event itself, which will take place at the RSL treaty facility. As you are aware, the city has pledged $30,000 toward this event with Deloitte Hanson and RSL taking on the rest of the burden, which will be significant. There is no way that we could pull this off without their financial support, for sure.
That's great for the public to know that too, that they, the lion's share of this is coming.
Yes, their share is massive.
The lion's share, that's perfect.
So.
Well, the potential reach on our investment here is potentially huge.
Yes, yes. But we're excited, right Cody? So we're looking forward, we're looking forward to working together and being best friends with each other in RSL.
So do you need us to approve any budget for this?
No, you just did. There may be some additional overtime that will be incurred. If we are awarded the host event, the opening weekend event, then the event will run from Saturday, July 1st through the 3rd of July, Monday, July 3rd. Or I'm sorry, August, sorry. Sorry to get mad, you guys. Saturday, August 1st to Saturday, or Monday, August 3rd with the race being on August 3rd, so.
Wendy, can I ask a very quick question? Understanding that there's obviously stages to that.
Yes.
Did we simply put in a letter to host the opening? Or is there a potential that we don't get the opening and we get a stage?
We specifically requested the opening weekend. That's what RSL's preference was.
Okay.
And with them paying the amount of money and dedicating the resources that they are, that's what, we're going for the big bucks. So.
Let's do it.
The Big Bang.
And Wendy really wants to know. Wendy put to this and she, because of her application, we got it.
What?
Thank you.
We don't know until 22nd.
I know.
Are there any other questions?
Wow.
No, I, I'm, it will be great. They have a great staff out there and we're excited to be part of this with them.
That was fantastic. We're super excited. Now you're next.
Good, yes. All right, let's talk about Dingo Dog Park. We had a neighborhood meeting last night and it was fantastic. So this is kind of the timeline as to what's happened with this project. It really was good. Both of our, our neighborhood meetings were great last night. This is the timeline for the Dingo Dog Park. We had 10 people in attendance and that had questions in his or. There was 10 that signed the paper. That's all I can report. There may have been more or less, but 10 signed. This is kind of where we're at in the process. We've gone to Planning Commission, made an update to them. We had the neighborhood meeting last night. We're here talking to you today. We're planning on going to Planning Commission on the 21st for a public hearing. And then I'll bring that back to you in December and let you know what our status is and if we're ready to move forward. We do already have budget funds allocated for this project. It's just getting the details down. This is the conceptual design for the park. As you all are aware, it's just down the street here on Harriman Main Street in a abandoned detention basin that's no longer being used. One thing I found out last night that I learned from the people that attended is there are people with really big dogs that live right here. Massive rottweilers, bloodhounds, Great Danes. I mean, there's some big dogs. I was shocked.
It's like my horse just goes down the road.
So they, everyone was really excited. I'm gonna show you some of their comments. We had some really great comments. These comments are from the DRC specifically and they're in the packet that I gave you in case you don't wanna read the screen. We had a really good DRC meeting about, about this area. We did have some concerns about some crossing on Harriman Main Street. So we're working with engineering on some of those issues and trying to find a way for the people that are on the north side of Main Street to get to the dog park. And here's our neighborhood meeting comments. We, we asked those in attendance if they would be open to pay to play. And the whole reason for a pay to play model is really to encourage people to vaccinate their animals, to make sure in, any dogs that are visiting our parks are up to date on their vaccinations, so they're not spreading disease. To make sure their dogs are registered with the city in which they reside. And then to help towards the maintenance and operations of the park. So they, they voiced approval for it as long as it was within reason. And that's something that we'll bring back to you in future meetings if that's something you're interested in us exploring. Taylorsville currently has a pay to play model for those very reasons. Their rate is about, I think it's $10 a year for residents and 25 for non-residents. So just to give you kind of, and I think they're the, I think they're the only dog park in the county that charges a fee right now.
So some of the other comments, they like the trees, the walking path around the perimeter and the pavilions for shade and to gather.
So was that the same person that wanted tracks and didn't want tracks?
Yeah. No, they were two different people. They like the water feature, the splash pad. They requested a wash off area at the exit. Sometimes they get muddy paws and they wanna clean them off before they get in the, in the car. They would like us to consider a restroom for people. They questioned whether there is enough parking. I think our current concept has 20 spaces, so that's something we can look at with our consultant. They want tracks as soon as possible. They do not want tracks at all. They're glad to see Bobcat Drive will close. They're concerned that Bobcat Drive is going to close. And then someone mentioned they'd like it to be indoor, not outdoor. That's kind of the comments that we received. So there you go. Overall, it was a very positive meeting. Councilmember Smith made it for, for a little bit. And I felt it went really well. Blake and Jonathan came and helped run through some of the Bobcat Drive closures and explained a lot of that to people. And I was really shocked because I went into it thinking we were gonna have people upset about it being a dog park and I knew that Bobcat was gonna be an issue, but it really just wasn't. It was, it was, they were just trying to figure out how they're gonna get around, you know? So it turned out not to be as big of an issue as we thought. But people were very positive and excited. So we're excited too.
Awesome.
Our next steps, we're continuing to work with Blue Line to revise the plan. If approval is received, we're gonna start going on it. I would really like to see it open in August of 2020. That's gonna be a hard push. But that's kind of my goal.
So it does not have a, a public first year, right?
Does not.
How do you feel about that?
Both ways. One is if people go into the restroom, use the restroom, they either take their dog with them or their dog is running unsupervised in the park. So that makes me a little bit nervous.
Unless you have a little hook thing, you can have their.
The dog, hitchhose, dog hitchhose. It would encourage people to stay there longer. So, you know, if they don't plan ahead, then they'll. We could encourage people to go to Maverick and buy things while they go to the bathroom.
That's thinking right there.
So I'm, I'm fine with it. If, if you want us to add that, it's another about a quarter of a million dollars to add a bathroom.
That's a lot.
So yeah, their bathrooms are not cheap.
Okay.
And then yeah, so we'll come back to you in December with what Planning Commission came back with. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to forward those to us. Any questions or discussion on the dog park?
Nope, which brings us to your next item.
Yes, which was more controversial than I thought. So that tells you you cannot believe social media in going into things. Because I thought one person would show up for this one and 500 people will show up for the dog park. And we had seven people, we actually had seven people show up at the trailhead and it was a really good meeting. So this is kind of where we're at with White Hollow and I didn't have room to do a continuous timeline. So pretend like that just goes forever. We actually started proposing this trailhead in October of last year when we cut the VST trail there. The reason why we didn't get into specific design at that time was because we didn't own the property. But we'd always planned on purchasing that property using A-Cup funds. We just completed that purchase in September of this year. So we put a concept together with Bo and Collins and went to DRC on October 30th, mailed those letters out, we had the neighborhood meeting last night. And here we are tonight. So just to let everybody know kind of where we're at. This is the proposed trailhead location at the end of White Hollow. This is 6600 West, which will end with a residential neighborhood here. And this, this is actually already cut. This map was in October 2018. So this trail is existing.
Oh, that's a set of stairs.
That is a set of stairs.
That is a set of stairs.
So these are some of the DRC comments that came back. From our DRC meeting, all makes sense. These are the neighborhood meeting comments. No one submitted written comments. Everything was verbal in our discussion. We did make a lot of notes on the actual signboard for our consultant to take back and see what she could do to meet their requests. They request, requested to shift the parking lot to minimize impact to the neighbors on the north or on the south and the north actually. Consider a guard rail, complete a parking and traffic impact study, which we had always planned on doing as far as this project.
When they say move the lot, what are they?
So the neighbor on the south wants it moved further north. The neighbor on the north wants it moved further south.
Especially fast.
So they, they want us to shrink it. Some, there was at least one, if not two residents that felt like the parking lot was too big. They felt like they didn't need that many stalls there. And I think that we'll get some analysis of that through the parking and traffic impact study.
What's it, what are they designed up?
Forty. They won't be lined. It's gonna be a gravel parking lot. So depending on how people park, it could be 10. But.
And plus it's better than having them parking in their neighborhood.
Right.
Especially once, if we do the challenge staircase, I can see teams and stuff coming here just to do that as a team building experience, you know, football teams, basketball teams, whatever. And we're gonna want that parking space.
Yes. And so our, our approach through this process has been to phase this project because of the cost. There's a lot of grading up there that we need to do and it's gonna be quite expensive to retain those walls. We're gonna work with our consultant to see how we can reduce those. Blake had a really good idea that I think we're gonna look into. So we'll look at ways to get things done. But we've kind of asked her to completely revise the plan. They also wanted one drive lane, not the two as we proposed there. You can see that's an in, has an in and an out, so it's basically a one-way loop. They asked for it just to be on one lane and not to have two, an entrance and an exit.
Why?
Because it's close to the neighbor on the south. And they just liked.
Right, they had to help the horse, people with horse trailers get in and out easier.
I think everyone is.
Everyone's gonna get out and get easier there.
And then they want a playground added to it and like I said, a smaller parking lot. So the first phase that we proposed was about 20 stalls, the in and out, the retention, a little bit of temporary lighting until we are able to build the restroom. And really that's it. It was pretty bare bones. The second phase then included the, the restrooms and pavilions, expanding the parking lot. And then the third and fourth phase would include the challenge staircase. We're just not sure where that's gonna come out funding wise, so. And we wanna see how people use this space before we start getting crazy, so. So our next steps, we're working with Bo and Collins. We pushed off our Planning Commission meeting till December. We were gonna try to get that on the 21st as well, but we're gonna push it back and really try to refine the plan. And if it's approved by Planning Commission in December, we'll move forward and get into traffic and parking study and then start working on construction documents. You guys have any questions?
Good on you.
Hey, I'm.
We get.
No, he's gotta wait until the very end. He wants to stay the whole time.
Okay, so we talked about 3.8. We're on to 3.9. Discussion on the proposed 118 South Development, Blake.
All right, as this comes up, you guys have all seen this before, I believe. This is the DAI project along 118. So this first slide, it kind of shows, just to refresh your memory where it's at, focusing on three main parts of this. There's a business, commercial office space to the north. There's an open space component in the middle and the south end is the storage component. And so really what I'm looking for here is direction from the council. If you want us to keep working with the, with the developer on this after I give you the information I'm about to give you. So just to kind of point it out, here's some of the, how the property lays out. It's very encumbered by utilities. It's got gas lines, power lines, you name it, it's there. Drainage and a UDOT pond to boot. So that just kind of shows there's, there's very little usable space here. And if you notice, let's see, make sure I hit the right button. This area here is shown as developable in the, in the plan. It's part of the lot. It's just parking lot. That's all you can really do underneath. I don't even know if you can plant trees underneath the part, the power lines. I think the requirements are you can't put trees over like 17. So the, the main point to look at is the, the storage site. So the access would be solely off of Mountain View corridor, be right in, right out. This location is pre-approved by UDOT when the agreement was done, when Mountain View corridor was built. The requirement is it needs to connect to a public road. So as it comes in, this road would have to be public for a certain distance as the cars stacked up to get into the storage complex. And so there would probably be something like a maintenance agreement so that the storage unit company would maintain this road, but it would be a public road. So that's one hang up. The other considerations, there's, there's no neighborhood access along this east side. And that was, I think when they had neighborhood meetings, that was one of the things that was brought up.
But they said they were gonna do the fire access, right?
There's, there's an emergency access right there showing on their original plan. And I don't know if this fire probably does require that. We'll have to see. In the development agreement that would come with this, there would be requirements of what that would look like when it comes to. And then the other item is this Midas Creek Trail connection right here. We're building this trail going up to 5600 West with our grant that we got from the county. And so this, this is a key connection to connect the Copper Creek neighborhood out to the west. So back to my question, should staff continue to work on this? Do you have recommendations, requests, requirements?
So how much of that, I mean, they, they show this business site over here. What's the likelihood of any business actually going there?
So the original draft of the development agreement says that they have to have a building permit hold on one of their office spaces before they get available permit issued for anything. So.
The push was to try and get some jobs before they came in with it, with the storage. And I, I know I said this last time too and I, I'll stick by this. I think that anytime, we just had a discussion on the need for multifamily, all this stuff. Anytime you have condensed housing, people need a place to put their stuff. Even though they just have, we all have stuff. And if we don't have a house big enough to put it, then we rent a storage unit to put it in. And we don't have any of this in this, in our community. So I just think that it's just a necessary component of, of higher density housing for people in general.
People fill out their garages and then their cars get parked outside.
Yeah, exactly. That's, but and if you don't have a garage somewhere, you're gonna put your stuff. You're gonna, you need to rent a storage unit.
I think that original language in the development agreement was so that we didn't potentially end up getting just the storage units and, and nothing happening on that north side. So we tried to, to build a little bit of protection in that, that we get the full plan as it's laid out. I know one of the things that we talked a little bit in depth about was any potential or improvements that they may make or willing to make or whatever to the, where the trail connectivity, that green space in there. Has there been any, any recent discussions on what that plan looks like? If there's any improvements or amenities in there? Or is it just simply the two on the side, they would like dedicate that property? So what's, where were they at on that?
So the discussions where they dedicated, they were open to do some improvements, but they'd heard that we didn't want any improvements. We just wanted it and we would do what we would do there. Cause we don't really have a plan as to what really needs to go in there just yet. We just know the trail needs to go through and maybe a little bridge up in Creek. So they were open to some improvements. As the development agreement would come through, I would imagine if the council wanted to add some of those improvements in there, there would be that opportunity.
I would actually look at Wendy to say, have you had a chance really to look at this and what your thoughts?
So we have, and we met with them last week, two weeks ago. I can't remember when. And we've talked about soccer fields here. We've talked about dog parks here. And the neighbors from, if I remember correctly, Blake, the neighbors don't want any of that there. They do want the trail connection, but they don't want anything active going on in that area.
Was it, was there concern or because of the parking, the car parking, right?
The traffic.
Yeah.
And probably noise, I would guess. I wasn't at their neighborhood meeting. But I would say we'd like to keep this whole trail corridor consistent. So if we're gonna landscape here, then we need to landscape up the entire corridor. Because you're gonna have people up Midas Creek that just have native, want their area to be pretty too. And so even though native is very pretty.
It's very natural.
Very natural. So you just kind of have to be careful what you, what you do in one area. We're, we're open to whatever. We did talk to them about continuing the asphalt trail along, all the way to 114, 118. Kind of up that way. There's a maintenance access road there now. We would just make it an asphalt trail to, to connect to Midas Creek.
Person connecting.
They, they wanted to push the road where the maintenance access road actually, push it more to the west and put a landscape buffer with this trail through it along there. So that would get more of a buffer between the residents and this parking area.
Is that something that they could actually do? Could they move that maintenance road to the, further to the left?
They could move it a little bit. It'll run out of room pretty fast with the hall getting covered.
Yeah, there's, I just could say, yeah, there's a lot going on there.
I know, when they talked, also they, when they were talking about doing it some sort of program, well, parks or something like that. Because I know that was an issue with the neighborhood. I thought that most of the, most of the concerns were traffic, like parking in our neighborhood and walking to the soccer field and stuff. And I thought that part of the solution that they had thought would be to up where the offices, that they would expand that parking so that, so that anybody using those fields had to park in those, in those parking. Doesn't necessarily mean control, I understand.
We talked, we talked about that too in that meeting and also talked about it being a trailhead for the Midas Creek Trail, so that's definitely a possibility.
I'm, I'm, if you're looking for direction, I'm fine with you guys continuing to talk about it and see if there's something to work out.
And the main sticking point on our side was the public road tying in.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's so dependent on transportation access.
And that's obviously an issue, but you know, if that's something that they can work out, I'm fine with it and they have to work it out first.
And they'll have to go through a full UDOT process to identify the stacking and backing, the D cell lane, all those requirements. Those are outside of our control. But I think this will be the only building addressed off of Mountain View corridor, along the old corridor.
Do you have a preference on park amenities in this location? Do you want soccer fields or another amenity there?
If there's room for soccer fields, why not?
I have, I have question about, again, impact on the residents that are right there and how we would actually accommodate that with parking and those. So then again, I, I definitely hear your concern about consistency along there. My main concern is obviously that we just keep that trail connectivity through there. And honestly, I just look to you for your recommendation as you look at how all of that ties together.
But to Clint's point, putting the amenities in after the fact, you know, I mean, we only have to look at Blackbridge to look at the challenges of ingress and egress when we put it in after the fact. Not, and not to mention the fact that the residents then have no choice. You know, it just, it's, they've already been there and this is coming in. So yeah, I, I echo that concern that we not duplicate that problem that we have with Blackbridge. Putting an amenity in after the fact, when in fact it may or may not be the right place.
Yeah, it would be nice however to have something useful with that piece. But you know, and then that's again, back to that divergent thinking, can we think outside the box a little bit? Ask the residents, you know, can they come up with some solutions of, you know, ideas that might be, work well there?
Sounds like a great place for a peck of all.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Sure.
I actually had a thought the other day, wondering where, because we haven't heard anything on this potential for a long time. I can't remember who I was talking to, the us that we were talking to. Yeah, for sure. So I'm glad to see it back and I do, at least supportive of continuing. I think, I think in terms, I think there's a need for storage out here. And I think that honestly, that particular site, that would be a good use for that particular site. And again, submerging in the development agreement to again, continue to incentivize them to get something going on the north piece before we, we sell off on that, I think is a, is a good step, good way to go, so I'm supportive.
That's important built-in protection that we get some, some job creation or something there.
Yep. You give what you need. Yep. One, one quick comment. Some storage units look a little bland. This is gonna be brought in Mountain View course. We, we may want to enhance our storage unit quality. And Mike's been talking about some ideas of maybe making this look a little more good.
Have you seen them by me?
More bitter.
Yeah. When I talked, when I talked to these guys a year, what, six months, a year ago, when we talked?
Yeah.
I told them I would love to see the storage units look a lot like that business development. So that it was almost to the point where you weren't sure. When you look at it and you just say, it's a real rigid standard.
So we talked about trying to do some climate controlled stuff because that has more of that office park feeling. But we weren't sure that council, they definitely wanna do outdoor, outdoor storage. And they definitely wanna do, you know, traditional mini warehouse storage. But I was thinking maybe we could get some along Mountain View.
Go for it.
Yeah.
It's gotta look good. Any further comments or questions or no concerns? Okay, we already did 3.10. We'll go to 3.11. Michael, Brad Grill.
Yes, this is a request that Gordon, we are working with a, a company to bring a restaurant and a bar and a manufacturing facility. They're gonna bring up the site right here, just south of our auto mall zone. So it's in the C2 zoning district. And they're just starting to work with the city. But of course, they need to get in line with the state to start requesting their alcohol permit. So that's the approximate location. It's about a two acre site that they wanna locate on. They will be visible from Mountain View.
What are they manufacturing?
So it's, it's a, it's a.
Brew club.
Brew, yeah.
Okay, so they're, they're making big.
Yeah. So they will be asking for a series of four permits from the state, a manufacturing permit, a packaging license, a, a, a full service bar and a full service restaurant with alcohol.
Have we ever denied an alcohol local consent?
No.
We have, there's no limit on how many local consents we can do, correct?
Right. So this is a company that has a location in Draper right now and a brewery in Salt Lake. And so essentially they're combining both, both halves of their operation into one location proposed here in Harriman.
So they're vacating the Draper location?
No, that's, it's new. They feel like there's enough of a market that they wanna be here in Harriman. They were looking at other locations, but they felt like this was a better location for them. So they're excited to come.
They're good, they got good food.
Yeah.
I worked with the the developer on the super target in Salt Lake City and he was a very good development partner, yeah.
So so we'll be bringing this to you in December for a vote, we just wanted to talk to you, so December eleventh, you'll see this on your agenda.
I have no concern with it. Okay, any other questions or concerns with council? Yeah, we get that all the time, restaurant, restaurant, restaurant.
About a year, so.
All right, discussion regarding the Creek Ridge, Mountain Ridge, Master Development Agreement.
Okay, so this is very pretty.
We saw that earlier.
Yeah, you saw this earlier, we had our, well, it's trying so far. So at the last meeting, it really wasn't clear of the council's direction, but the developer has requested that we move forward, and I think it's our obligation to move forward. So instead of bringing a development agreement for your approval, I've identified concepts to see if these are things you agreed with. Or don't agree with, and at the end of the day, tell us if you're interested in this or not. So this is Mountain Ridge Development Agreement, um, or Development, you know the area. And there's been some subsequent discussions and possibilities, so let's go through those, so. The best in concept in the development agreement, they would be vested with the rights to develop the project. With city vested laws, zoning maps and a PD overlay, and there'll be some exceptions. Those exceptions include uh, requirements from the state and federal compliance, updated city development standards. We are going through a new development standard right now, so we put, so we would put something like this in there that we may even update it again by the time this development.
As of the date, right, except the MDA grants them just as of the date that that's up that it's.
There'd be an exception that whatever the new development standards are and whatever new ones we may develop in the future, they have to apply with, comply with. Taxes, fees, impact fees, we can change those, planning and zoning modifications, generally citywide. And procedures, and this is, this is a brilliant request.
Yes.
Um, she wants to use the current procedures to administer the substance, so to speak, of the trend, of the development. So if if it's a new process to take the, for example, a subdivision to uh, through a new process, they'll agree to that new process in advance.
So for example, we've created a community, you know, outreach pro- our community liaison program and had to do community.
Yeah, that that would be a procedure that is an exception to basically locking up a.
And and then development standards is, uh, so we changed our driveway from forty to twenty five.
Let's see, the thickness, the thickness of the concrete, the what, you know, how wide, those would all be development standards in the engineering manual. That we're in the process of doing it for.
And those would be anything that we adopted citywide.
Yep. So the the unit concept, this is how many units, rather than creating this pod plan where they can put so many and so many here and move them back and forth. This is, this baby's gonna be set in kind of mushy concrete, how's that? So they're gonna have a hundred and ninety six single detached units, two hundred and four townhomes and three hundred and fifty condominium units for a total of seven hundred and fifty units. That's gonna be described in the site plan, the site plan will have little squares all over it of where these units will actually be. If you wanna move forward with this, now it'll be part of the overlay zone, the PD overlay zone, that's really what the PD overlay. Um, parks and open space concept, so the city will design system parks, system improvement parks. And the owner will construct and install improvements to those parks as we've designed it at its cost. But the developer or the owner will wanna be reimbursed from impact fees. But there's not gonna be enough park impact fees to reimburse him. So we're just gonna have, we're gonna have a control here because we designed it, so if we're asking him to build something, we have to figure out some way to accomplish it.
So what's the difference?
What's that?
So we're gonna put the difference.
We're gonna have, he, they're gonna ask for the difference, we're gonna have to find a source for that, if this is.
That's a Wendy's grant.
Well, the, well, well, the reality is in the end, the simple fact is the residents are paying for the park.
Yeah.
It's not, the the developer's not paying for it, he's putting in initially, but.
He's just putting it in.
But the residents are, yeah, getting reimbursed.
There's a reimbursement, yeah, there's a reimbursement.
Just to be, just to be clear, it's not, it's simply that the residents are still paying for the park.
He'll be the bank.
Yep.
So John, is there, you know, you talked there on the top one, that they put in the improvements at its cost.
Right.
Is there, is there any ability for us to somewhat control those costs?
We are gonna design it.
Cause we'll design it, but then they put it in at their cost, so let's say it's something that, just to throw something out.
So my my development, there'll be a reimbursement agreement, the reimbursement will have two concepts, engineer's estimate and their actual costs, they're gonna get the lesser of those.
Okay, thank you.
So more of the park and city uh, or park and open space concept, um, since the parks double as a storm drain detention. There'll be no reimbursement for the land value, because it's part of their open space requirement. And there'll be no reimbursement for their sod and irrigation, because it's a project detention. So it's gonna have grass and sprinklers in it, and then we get to move from that point on.
Anything about that?
Okay, any sequencing, so if we want them to to donate that at the beginning, we can do that. Or when twenty houses are built, any anywhere along those lines. My thought would be is let's just have them do it as part of the initial development agreement. Any thoughts?
So you're saying like when they're putting in the roads, you're doing the park?
No, they'll, they'll probably put sod as irrigation. But in the front, rather than wait for all the development to come along, then put the park in. And Wendy would say, put the park in and let the development come to it, am I right on that one?
Yeah, we can use the park space.
One hundred and thirty eight hundred south concept, so half of one thirty eight hundred south is in Harriman and half is in Riverton. So the owner will coordinate the design and construction, uh, constriction of one hundred and thirty eight hundred south. And the owner would be reimbursed from transportation impact fees for the cost attributable to Harriman's half, there'll be enough impacts to reimburse him for that cost.
And yes, we will be constraining it.
Yeah, we'll be. Storm drain concept, my fingers are fat, um, storm drain concept, you've heard a lot about this. A portion of the storm drain is in Riverton and a portion is in Harriman. The portion that's in Riverton would be maintained, the surface would be maintained by Riverton or an HOA, so it's not our responsibility. Harriman would then get an easement, or we would be granted an easement, so we can maintain and repair the underground structures, the storm drain pipes. The storm drain in Harriman would be dedicated to the city, so we'd have fee, we'd take ownership of it. And the owner would construct at its cost, of course, it'd be a reimbursement again, and Harriman would reimburse the owner for the cost of the pipe. Not for the land, and and specifically identify related improvements.
For the whole pipe or just the upsize?
I think it's all gonna be our pipe.
So you, cause I thought Riverton needed some of that as well, we were just gonna upsize.
I don't think Riverton needs any, exactly, not on our side.
The the development has a portion and we'd have to look at that, it's probably like a a ninety ten split, I I wouldn't put a number to it, but. There's a large portion of its system improvement and a small portion of its project improvement, if they go into that pipe.
But in the vast majority of it, it's ours.
We'd work that out, these are, these are broad concepts.
Just as long as that gets worked out.
Sure. So it's likely the storm drain impact fee would not be sufficient to pay from the project area to pay for reimbursement. Um, so we're exploring other options. Of of how to deal with that water, and Blake's got some ideas, and I don't know if you wanna share them or not share them.
Um, still a little early, I I've got some meetings over the next few days where I think in the December eleventh meeting, I'll have some really good events.
Um, and and the storm drain, the dedication of the property for part of the storm drain. Structure would be counted towards their open space.
As long as it's.
It's in Harriman, if it's in Riverton, don't get counted.
Well, and as long as the surface level is usable as open space, cause it's gonna be a trail on top, right?
It's a trail.
It's a trail, yeah.
Cause we're gonna pipe the whole thing in.
Yeah, so I'm okay with that, as long as it's a trail, I don't want just uh, natural grasses that nobody can use, does that make sense?
Well, uh, our ordinance would probably allow them to get some open space portion of that.
It is a discount if they.
We'll put, we'll make them put a trail in.
It's not usable, like if it was a ditch, it wouldn't.
Right.
So the the owner would create an HOA, and the HOA would maintain the surface improvements and the trail dedicated to the city. And then we'd have to think about a maintenance agreement.
See why you print it out?
Tax board.
I love standing here with nothing. So we'd have to think about a maintenance agreement, because there'd be an ender- uh, a private entity maintaining a public project. Same as if we did one eighteen, we'd have to think about how that storage unit would maintain our road. So there's some new stuff on the commercial, a parcel component to about five point five acres that's currently owned by the school. Would be designated as commercial, then if no commercial uses have been developed within five years. Then the owner may develop residential units in the five point five acres. You could probably push harder on the five years, that's just a number they've come up with, their attorney originally came up with ten.
Forty five?
Huh?
Forty five years?
So there's there's some, there's some issues in here that we'll have to consider and work through, and first of all, the owner does not own the five point five acres. It's owned by the school district, so we'd have, that he'll have to work out a trade somehow. There'd be some efforts required to develop, you know, what at what level, what does it mean that he would try to improve this and sell it as commercial space? What are the standards and reporting requirements, so um, and let's get to the next one, I'll tell you how I think maybe to solve this. Rezone, or rezone it to a commercial designation. So um, they're gonna have to come back to the council and ask to change it. So we'll, when they come to us in five years from now and say, we wanna change this to residential, we can look back and see. Have you actually tried to develop this commercially, if you just let us down and do nothing, we're not gonna change it, so if. It kinda creates a self policing mechanism, so to speak, that's about the best I can come up with, I can say, oh, you could give us monthly report or yearly report, but. This seems, it seemed like a pretty good idea, it's a concept. So if it goes, then the question is if it goes residential, how many units can go in there? Are they additional to the seven fifty, or are they included in the seven fifty? What I would think you uh, is maybe just give them the density of the condominium units that they have elsewhere, just somewhere along that line. That's probably not a real good place for a single family residence. Now I'm bringing the planner with my.
Yeah, it's like.
What type of exterior products would you use, John?
So here's some other concepts in the development agreement, there'll be the outsourcing of development applications if needed. Um, acceptance, signature of a licensed professional is deemed to be correct. City's denial of an application, so if we deny an application, if it's non-scientific or technical, we'll go to mediation where you just talk back and forth. If it's something that's scientific or technical, then you hire an arbitrator, he says you're right or you're wrong. There's a uh, an amendment concept, they wanna create a mechanism to amend the development agreement without coming back to the council. So here's our thoughts, is the administrator, whoever that may be, identified in the development agreement. May approve uh, approve relocation and realignment of underground improvements. Size of pipes, you can put this pipe here, you don't have to put it here, and they don't have to come back to the council.
So the administrator, administrator would be city administrator.
It'd be either, yeah, somebody like a Gordner or Brett. Or Mike. Or a Blake, or maybe all of them, or a Justin, yeah, or a Justin, any anybody in the city you want. So the administrator, then we'll create a mechanism that the administrator will then notify the city council of that proposed amendment. And the city council then can require that come back. If you think it's in, the location of a pipe, is that important, they'll come back with a full amendment. So then the the planning commission may amend the design guidelines, because we thought, well, that's their bailiwick, and we get to amend it. All other amendments are processed as amendments to the MDA which come back to the council.
So, cause the way I read this, it says that the amendments made by the planning commission would also come back for us for approvals, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Um, it, Mike may not have said that very clearly, but those design guidelines can be approved by the planning commission.
George, I could, the percentage of stucco versus rock versus glass inside of a building?
Yep.
They can amend the design guidelines, but all others would have to come to the council. Any density, any change in uses, or anything like that, would come back to you.
We create a liability concept, you've seen this before, but I just wanted to relay it to you, that there'll be no monetary damages, the only remedy is specific performance, basically, is the court saying you have to do this. But the city may unilaterally withhold all future reviews, approval, license, building permits, certificates of occupancy, that's that's a pretty good little weapon that the city can uh, use. To get compliance or other permits for a development of the project in case we default. So this is their previous plan, and when we're talking about, this is a picture of the five point, five point five acres up here somewhere. I don't know where that line is.
I don't think they know either.
So that's where it would be. If that's something you're interested in doing.
Can you flip that one, John?
This one doesn't have the school district property there, so it's a little bit.
It's a little bit different, harder to see, but.
We we pulled the switcheroo on there.
I just need your new prescription of glasses, but. Okay, now.
And this one is a little bit different than the planning commission saw last week, cause they've already made a couple changes that.
Moved the road.
We talked about, they moved that road to separate the condos from the commercial.
To where it carved those two buildings off.
Cause that was the one thing the planning commission talked about, so yeah, they did that. Oh, I think there's one more. That Blake was gonna talk about.
Oh, so this deals with.
These are the pre-approved access points that UDOT approved with the original agreement with Mountain View corridor, so.
So they have to move the one, John.
Trying to get myself oriented, I can't remember how I made this.
North is that way.
So here's the cabbie parkways, we roll around, some high schools right here.
There you go.
It's the one on that side.
So you can see, this is the point that we've been talking about moving to right here, there's also one right here in Riverton that might not get used, so. Might be a selling point to UDOT that, look, there's two pre-approved points, maybe combine them as one over on the north side of the high school.
And there's some flexibility with the locations on those slip wraps.
They've been moved before, we moved, we moved one up for Winco.
With relative ease, I'm assuming, with with good backing or reasoning.
It was good reasoning, but took a year, but. This is UDOT.
The hard thing with UDOT is as soon as you get working down a process with somebody, they change positions, then you have to start a new person, so.
So easy is with air quotes.
Really, it's Blake, so it's easy, it's not an issue.
Timing is assuming.
For him, yes.
So we thought that'd be a helpful exhibit to look at.
Yeah, great, that's good. It's way good, thanks.
So what's, what are you looking for from us, or is this just for information?
This is more information.
Information, so uh, if we go down this route, then the next thing would be is um, Creek Ridge Development Agreement, would you? But would also, so go back, would. But would also, so go back, would, one more. So we'd have to do the amendment to the Rosecrest because a portion of this property is subject to the Rosecrest Development Agreement.
Over here.
Somewhere over here, right? So we'd have to deal with that and then we impose a new development agreement. So we'd just probably use the same concept we talked about earlier that we just uh have application to amend the boundaries of the development agreement. Uh amend the PUD because this has a PUD, which is a conditional use component, and then a rezone. And all three of those would hopefully take care of the Rosecrest development. So if um if we do this, one of the things they talked about is moving two hundred and seventy units from Creek Ridge. To work down towards uh or this other development. Remove two hundred and seventy units and we've talked about from area A. So area A is up here. Now this is uh, this is the proposed plan. Now. Disappeared again. So the, the development agreement we would, we would. Pass or approve would be that it goes to area A. These are drawings that they have provided. Um and they just reduce the numbers, but they don't show you where they go. A numbers are the same, B area is the same, C area is the same, but they reduce these numbers. And if you add them up, they don't work. So they need a respective fix. So they'd come out of area A, I assume. That's probably where we'd want them to come. And there's my last picture.
Nice. We like the.
Okay, I'll take that.
So that's what the trails are gonna look like?
So, so that's exhibit A?
Yeah, this is the trail that's over the storm drain.
Yeah.
Right here, see it?
How many trees is that gonna be proposed?
Problem solved, sure. Problem solved.
Okay, so this is information, this is information for you.
We just wanna keep you posted again, cause you're not gonna see us again another month. It'll be a couple of meetings already through the planning commission. We just don't want you to be falling behind with what we've been talking about. Okay. Alright, so from what I can tell, we're all through our items except for the whatever city manager.
And three point three.
Three point three.
See, there we go. That's why I asked. So we'll go back to three point three now. Three point three discussion related to commercial property located at one thirty-four South Mountain View Corridor. Heather.
So council has asked to discuss with the property owner. Uh regarding commercial property on approximately one thirty-four hundred south, forty-eight fifty west. It's about thirty-five acres and is owned by SLR. I have a few maps in here that the property owner may want to use in his discussion, but basically these are just showing our a- access points. The next one is a, there we go, a grading. This shows where it needs filled or needs to be hauled out.
Needs to be hauled out. This was bad material that was placed. So it needs to be hauled out with any better fill haul than to replace it.
And then we have uh. Just work analysis system about six months ago. And then also we have some, a map showing all the utilities. So we just have these maps for reference and I'm just gonna turn it over to Dan.
Maybe, maybe one more point. This is also in CDA area, right?
Yeah, this is part of the Harriman Town Center, which is in the town center CDA twenty years, in the years like to be, I don't know. It was a twenty year.
So, so we didn't talk to Dan about some ideas of what we can do to try to get this on the market and sold. They even had some thoughts. We looked at studies and things we talked about. No, stand there.
It's harder to hit me with arrows.
Oh, you're lying. We wanna answer please for the cameras.
We're gonna have to roll it this way as opposed to something else.
Thank you. Um. So I think we've given the council for the most part the history of how SLR has the property in the first place. Cause it was originally planned to be part of the entire source of how the Harriman Town Center project. Uh and so uh we have looked at, you know, as commercial users have come, uh the feedback we get from a lot of people has been the concerns about. Fill, uh concerns about grading. If you look at that site and you compare it to the farms, uh property on the other side of Mountain View Corridor and even what the Harriman Town Center was. You know, uh there was a lot of fill on the west side of Mountain View Corridor. Uh I don't know how many of you remember, but back, uh so just north off of this map where it says kind of future exit ramps on that area. That area used to be really, really low. Uh people used to be able to hide back in there. We had a lot of trash disposal and stuff. Uh where people were dropping refrigerators. Um uh you know, so I would load those up in my truck and take them out to the dump. Uh cause it's one of the fun glamorous parts of the job. But uh you know, this, the, this west side property was always a little more rough. It had a half pivot that was uh, that was over there. Uh in the past and then we had the full pivots over on the other side, uh on the east side of the Mountain View Corridor. So this is kind of that last piece that still has yet to be cleaned up. Uh most of the commercial retail users that we've had come out here. Uh that they've looked at the site, um the comments come back that it's pretty rough. And you know, uh add to that, one of the other concerns talked about is, you know, the CVS. And when you drive by it next time, you have to look. It's built about six to eight feet above the grade on, on the rest of the property. And so when that was built, six to eight feet up, uh it kinda sets a weird benchmark for, for the ground. So we're, we've kinda thought about ways that we might mitigate the CVS on, on the corner a little bit, just from a retention standpoint. There's probably some things we can do to deteriorate. You don't realize it, but there's a lot of fall from uh, from the. You know, where the edge, where the western edge of the CVS parking lot is to the Mountain View Corridor, if I remember right, it's something like fifteen, eighteen feet. Uh from, from just that short space. So there's, there's grading issues that kinda go along with that, uh along with that preparation. We've had bids now uh done on that. Uh we think the bid cost, the, the bid costs come in between. You know, one point eight and two million uh is the number for cleaning up the site, uh as far as, as far as doing some of that work. Most of the contractors say they think there's some ways we can save money if uh, if we can um, uh if we take time. In other words, you know, if we, if we have a year for them to screen and, and deal with the, the fill that's on the site. You know, there was a time, uh and I, the fill, as you showed in one of the slides earlier, it's a, it's, it's called undocumented or unreported fill. And so it was never compacted when it was put in there. Uh you can go one more back maybe?
It's just a little slow.
Yeah, no, it's okay. It's just, it's just like me. Yeah, that area right there. Um this only shows one of the areas, the undocumented fill. We actually think there's two. Um if you look where the three homes are, just to the west of, or just to the east there. We, we also think there's undocumented fill there as well. Uh our, uh we'll have to do a soils report to kinda clear that out. That may take that budget up another six to eight hundred thousand if, if the amount of fill is there. Uh our farmer at the time thought he was being really helpful just by bringing in dirt whenever people had dirt. And so you know, sometimes it is helpful and in this case, it wasn't as helpful. Uh so that's okay. Uh for all the years that it was a farm, it was fine. Uh so anyways, so that's, that's some of the, kind of the topographical issues. And when you're trying to deal with the development of site, topographical, uh the, the geography of a site is a big deal. And how an engineer is a big deal. The other part of it obviously is, is the market demand and, and we've, I, I've talked about this preliminarily uh with staff. Uh about the idea of, you know, uh jointly looking at a market study uh that could, you know, uh. We can hire a marketing group that, or not a marketing group, but a, a group that does these uh market studies like RC Elko. Or uh some of the others. CB Richard Ellis does some of these and so CBRE. Uh but they'll go through and they'll do basically a, a market report and figure out what users aren't in the market, what users are. And you know, how we can use the space from a retail standpoint. And, and also how we can position it to, to be in a, uh the best place to, for a marketing, uh for a marketing position for, for future sale. We've done a few of these over the years. Uh we, the last one we did, I looked at it uh earlier today. The last uh marketing report we did was back in two thousand and thirteen. And so uh, so we've looked at, at that number. We've kind of run through some scenarios. Uh I've been through. Uh s- I, I've been to ICSC with this property, uh along with uh four others. Uh or I've looked at it, it's been ten years now. Uh and so it's not for lack of exposure. It's, it's always just a timing, right? And finding the right user at the right time. Uh and that's, I think it, it would, it'd be wise probably to look at uh jointly having a, a market. Uh you know, just to relook at, at the market. It's been, you know, five, six years now. And it would be wise to kinda look back with the changing scope of retail and how retail is uh, is evolving. And so uh anyway, so that's, that's some of the things that I, I've thought about preliminarily. Um I've talked to a few, few brokers who are also kind of looking at some of those, uh some of those options. And uh I think, you know, we'll have greater kind of feedback uh from them as well. Uh that can help us, you know, kinda guide where we are going. So uh but that said, uh we're, we, I, I told the council this before. Uh our company generally doesn't, you know, we're generally landholders. And for the most part, you know, people come by and, or you know, we'll, we'll market the property or we'll find, you know, buyers will come in and they'll notice the property and. Call us up and offer us uh, uh make us an offer or a proposal on, on buying the property. Um we've had limited offers uh over the last six years. Um I went back and looked at, you know, some of the different offers. For the most part, uh when the corporation residing Bishoprick is the owner. Uh we are only allowed one sale every five years uh by IRS tax guidelines. Which makes us really painful to work with sometimes, uh because we have to sell an entire parcel at, you know, as one piece. Which uh is from a thirty-six or thirty-five or thirty-six acre par- parcel. Uh that's, that's hard to find a user that's uh willing to come in and buy thirty-five, thirty-six acres. Uh and, and that has been a hurdle in the past as well. We've had some, you know, we've had offers from single users. The last uh probably real solid documented offer I had was for a Murphy's gas station. Uh and uh and the other one that was a really, was a solid offer was a two acre offer for a uh farm and tractor supply. Uh kind of like an IFA from a national tenant standpoint. And so um those are, uh those are some of the big, uh those are some of the users we've had. So you can see when, when that's the case, that's an obstacle for, for CPB, uh or the corporation residing Bishoprick. And so as a company, we've, we're talking about altering our strategy and, and moving this property and having SLR buy it. When SLR owns it, we can entertain smaller sales. Um but I'm still not sure, and this is the part I think that would be a fruitful conversation with the city. One, how do we, you know, can we joint venture to, to look at a market, a market study and what our leakage reports are and what kind of uses? One, one of the things that we found earlier uh was the potential for furniture. And uh what we, I, I would like to see how that really plays out today. Uh when you look at how much is going into like the IKEA and uh and the other, you know, the other projects that were built on. You know, the Draper, uh Riverton border at the, at the Fender and I fifteen. Um and see, you know, how that's impacted the availability of those sales. So the other, but the, the other part of that though was, you know, looking at ways that we can clean up the site. Uh this market report concept and also talking about, you know, uh attendance with city staff, with developers at ICSC. And some of these other commercial efforts to try and, you know, uh recruit and attract, uh attract users so that we can put together something. I will say that in, it is rare to find a parcel this big in our part of the valley that is available. Um you know, as, as we're watching more and more uh ground get picked up, uh the auto mall piece that you guys have just on the north side. Um in some ways uh is very fortunate, the way that uh, that you guys stepped out to pick that up. Uh cause you're able to preserve, uh preserve that piece. And then this piece could kinda be the next one uh down the road. Um and you know, to have it available for users to come in and. I, I've thought about, I thought back uh over these offers on, on whether or not I wish we'd done any of those, uh any of those. I'm not sure any of those would really reflect the mission of what Harriman's trying to accomplish on that property from a commercial gateway standpoint. Um but I'm happy to be corrected. So uh anyway, I, I wanted to be here to be available uh and uh help answer those questions. Uh I think this marketing concept would be good. Us looking at how we might be able to clean up the site a little bit, kind of more attractive uh for development. We think could be meaningful as well, so.
First of all, just appreciate your efforts to improve this site. I, it, it is a really valuable piece of property. It has access, it has visibility. You know, it's, it just needs a little beautification. So I, you know, appreciation for your willingness to look at that. Um and then, you know, I, and I also appreciate your thoughts as to uh what we might be looking for in terms of gateway and vision. So future conversations, but anything we can do to improve that so that it is one of those options that's not easily overlooked.
Yeah.
The hidden gem.
Thank you for teaching me the term of undocumented fill. I had never heard that before and.
We're building walls.
Um the, one question I do have, and I don't know Dan whether you're the best to answer it or, or Gordon, but the. The uh final build of, or the connection of Harriman Rose down to Mountain View Corridor there. Um I know we've made that decision not to, but, but what is at least the, the thought or the, the plan of that connection? Was it planned to not happen until this piece sold? Is that something that we think that, that making that connection would again help? With the, with the, the sellability of this parcel?
So, so part of the problem we have is we have the CDA to reimburse the developer and we're kind of running short a lot because this isn't here now. We certainly can cut them loose to finish that up as part of their development agreement with the town center folks. They're supposed to build it, but it's part of the reimbursement. And so we're, we're glad to reimburse them, but we just want some to reimburse them with. It's kind of the, the goal we're having. So. It may be that we just need to move forward and get going on that, but it's um, it's exciting to do that. We'd love new roads, but we also like to have.
How many are in the CDA? What's, what's the, what's the cost, Gordon? What do we think the cost is?
Yeah, what's the anticipated cost?
I think it was.
One point. I think it's about, I think it's around two. One point eight or two. It's right in there.
One point eight, ten million.
But from a, from, from a markability standpoint, is that something in, in those that you've tried to market this site and stuff? That you think would be beneficial to have that there? And I understand the reimbursement component of that. That's something internally for us to wrestle with. But is that something that's going to help or not so much at this point?
Yes, it helps. Um the, the question, and, and you guys certainly uh understand. And certainly can balance this probably better than even I understand. Um it's tough to front infrastructure on bait.
Yep.
Right? And uh, and so I recognize that difficulty and, and that cost. I will say uh a user that was here recently, that was one of the reasons they were concerned about the site, even though. I, I didn't understand why that was a concern. Uh at the end of the day, that was kind of one of those um head scratchers. Uh you know, that I, I didn't really understand. Um they felt like, you know, that, that road was a risk and you know, is one of the things that they were trying to figure out uh when they were comparing it to other sites. I, I don't understand that. At the end of the day, it's a, it's a known cost, whatever it is. It's uh one point eight or two million dollars. One point five or two million dollars, right? We know it's a cost. And as a, as a package for how we look at the whole project, certainly that's a business decision that can be made. At SLR generally, and I will just say this from, from our standpoint, we generally like to have everything had ready. So that when a user comes, it, it is ready for them to land. And the fewer question marks there are in the box, the better off it is. Um so you know, when we, we met with users, the, the topographical, site development, fill, all of those issues were a question mark. So, you know, when we we met with users, the the topographical, site development, fill, all of those issues were a question mark. And you know, for those of you who have worked in building roads or working in development. Those, I mean, those are not laughing matters as far as costs. You know, when you when you think of thirty-five acre site to balance it and to impact it and get all the fill at one point eight million, I was actually surprised it was that cheap. And so uh so I'll just say, so from a site work standpoint, to see one point eight there and then to see one point eight for the road. That's now we're almost what, four million dollars to add contingencies to that point? That's that's a lot of faith. And uh and that's also, you know, you start to think about what uses are there and and I I could put my government hat on the others, on the other. Side of me, trying to balance the four million versus, you know, the repayment on sales tax, you know, quarter to quarter uh money. Is uh sorry, that's not quarter to quarter, it's the local option. But taking, you know, the local option now and how soon it takes to get paid back on four million, you know, that that's a interesting calculation. You know, so th- those are the things I would balance if it was me. That said, I can just tell you, the the user uh that we most recently worked with, the concern was. The the site doesn't look good and, you know, we've got a weird road that we need to figure out. But you know what's weird is, I mean, there was traffic, everybody's surprised by this, there was traffic at Bangor or at Mountain View. And uh and one thirty-four right there. And so. Me, because in my mind, that road is already built for some reason. So I I went through Mountain View to try and go up and then just catch that to catch the council meeting tonight. And, you know, and then I remembered, oh yeah, that road's not empty yet. So, you know. I've I've been around, I've worked on this property, I've been around that road a hundred times, I know, you know, anyway. It just shows you mentally, for me, it's not a hurdle. Like I I can I can see a scenario where it'll be built. I'm not I'm not worried about the city's commitment, not worried about Harriman Town Center's commitment, you know, I'm not worried about our commitments. So it's, I I don't understand that citing criteria, but it's it's just a a box for them to check, if that makes sense, council.
Yeah, well, it's a it's a catch twenty-two for us on that road because. It's reimbursed through the TIF, but we don't have the TIF come out off the property to help reimburse. So. But having the road in would probably would potentially help us get a user on there.
Can I can I add, can I ask something real quick? You know, if we if we put together a marketing study, uh you know, if we found together and we decided we're gonna go in together and and put together a marketing study for the property. And look at leakage and some of these other factors. I think as part of that, we could add a uh an interview uh component to that, that they can answer that question for us out in the marketplace. How many look at that as a negative for, you know, for the site? And how would they present it to a client? They could ask a lot of brokers that. I've I've had that before, uh as I'm trying to answer infrastructure components. Uh and I've also asked them about how much value add that is to have it completed versus knowing that there's a commitment to complete it. And I think that could be a component of that market study that would help us answer it. Honestly, the market study is gonna be pennies compared to that four million dollar commitment.
You must like to think about.
Well, sharing isn't beating up yet, so I'm feeling pretty decent so far.
I figured I'd beat you up in the last few months. I'm gonna let you go home and bruise tonight.
So we'll we'll.
Let's get me agree on something.
We'll get with Dan and we'll talk about the strategy and we'll probably show up again in ju- December, talk through some ideas. So Dan loves meetings, he's told me that over and over again, so I would want to just get him by that point.
You want me to come to that one?
You're welcome.
Come on. You're welcome anytime, just.
Well, what we have at least is for the discussion is we have a a willing partner right now to help look at options to. To do what we need to do with this property. And I think we should take advantage of the fact we have a. A partner that's willing to help at least explore those options with us right now.
And as and as I've told the council, I I really do believe strongly that Harriman is doing a lot of things right. It probably is, well, it's not probably, it's frustrating waiting. I I I totally understand that. I will say where one thirty-four and one twenty-six is really the gateway to to Harriman in a lot of ways. I'm grateful that candidly, we don't have something that is like, you know, the Kmart out on sixty-two hundred South and Banker Highway. Uh I you can go up and down and find these dark retail, big box locations that are converting to quote high-end indoor self-storage. That I'm grateful that that's not the uh the ingress to the city. And, you know, uh if we had landed a big user or landed some box that then vacated for lack of sales or whatever it might be, a changing retail market. Once a building is built, it it's it's there and it's hard to get rid of. And I'm I in some ways, while it is painful to wait, on the other side, I think that what we can do will be more sustainable in the long term. From a gateway presence standpoint for for Harriman City. So in that way, I feel very good about where it's at. I know that doesn't solve the difficulties that it is to manage a city budget, so I'm sensitive to both of those options.
No, I I appreciate being here.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. So with that, I believe with all the jumping around, we have gotten through all of our items, uh except for the city manager updates. So I will turn time over to Brad.
I wanna bring up uh update on the family and soilers in progress. He's having a meeting with Scott here today with DQ and Brent Everett, is that right? And we actually felt very positive. Pat Jordan from Washington was calling in. She helped arrange the meeting, made contact with the governor's office and stuff that kind of made her priority for the mountain visit with us. So she had a good plan to get them out here. Cause you know, we've been dealing with uh trying to get some help from the Fed for the state for twenty years. And because the designation it was given after the Rio Tinto Penn- Pennacott cleanup. They didn't clean up all the properties, particularly the old farmlands that were still being farmed. But we feel confident today of some progress was made with Brent's knowledge, particularly he was, didn't know this, but didn't look familiar to me. But he's been involved with Harriman damage for twenty-nine years. That goes right back to the cleanup date when we actually did the first test analysis out out here. So he has good background. He was perplexed about the blue water, uh transport, causatory being closed and. One, he had several options in the process he was able to check on. But it felt like his, we got some movement saying we hadn't quite some time. Trying to go to Colorado or Brownsville, trying to get support there, change the destination and in Washington, so. We'll keep you updated on that. And we didn't get to that part of the strategic short meeting about talking about family lands in here in the now beginning December board meeting. Along with any more updates we might have on that. So. The other thing we're kind of looking for direction is the general plan discussion out of the strategy planning meeting. You showed the, we showed showed you our public outreach, the SPAR results, assisted survey, comments received by the by the public. And as we continue to work on the general plan, we are looking for uh input on how you'd like us to proceed. We prefer to continue with more outreach and then begin a draft plan. And I'm sure before should we be, work with uh. We wanted to begin work on on draft plan right away before we do the survey. Or after the survey, ask kind of a question on time in the survey. Y'all recommend us do your survey? And change some of the questioning uh was direction, kind of get leaned towards us?
Well, so I'll just speak to, I know Jared and I were on the same page and I think that we all were. I I think that. The, I, well, he just was standing right there. I remember when he made the comment. But the point, the point that that he articulated and and I agree with is. Many of those questions would lead one to believe that they had decisions within that process that in fact are already made. Uh and so I think that it behooves us to go out with a better worded survey at the launch of this. Just to overcome any misperception that may be out there. That, you know, those are decisions that are already made and in fact, it would appear otherwise based on some of the questions. So I think it's more important to do it right by the way of the residents than it is to move forward quickly.
So with that said, are you weren't suggesting we do that before we try to do a. A draft plan?
Yes.
So let me, let me, let me ask this, just just yeah, just because I I I'm questioning, if we do a draft plan, does that initiate better? Like response from?
That's that's our question.
You know what I mean? If they're looking at the draft and going, well, gosh, we thought this was this and then then they can understand it and.
Or could we not do both?
Both.
I mean, sometimes the fear is when you put together a draft plan, that it's already been done. And then why are you asking? Then it feels as if it's just window dressing. And so perhaps it's a a reaching out with better questions that more encapsulate the feedback we want. Then take that in true feedback form and inject it in that draft plan where we are able to. And then I agree, I think then it's really important to have a plan to look for and get to perhaps more specific questions.
So this is some of the bad news is uh we did pay for a survey with Y2 Polynex, is that correct? And to do another survey, which we did hear you lot clearly, you would want to do that. Or do a bunch of it, just allow it to happen.
Do they not, can we not approach the the conversation in that those survey questions did not meet the need? For which the survey was done? I mean, I if I was running a business, I would want to please the client. And I I would think a second round would be worth asking for. I would ask.
We'll ask. We can approach it that way, yes, absolutely.
They don't know if it was necessarily Y2 that was completely responsible for all of the.
Questions, that's it.
Questions, so.
Collect the data.
Well, it's worth an ask.
Worth an ask. I agree.
It will work, work, it's worth it.
Worst they can do is say no.
Okay, so then next thing, Tammy's gonna want to talk about Facebook streaming encoding protocol.
Um yes, so Facebook has made some changes. Um so they used to um support both RTMPS and RTMP. They only support RTMPS. So that means we cannot stream to Facebook anymore. Um our system is not supported by them. So we're working on that with them, but we have. No clue when that could happen. So we do still stream to our website and to YouTube. We've been offering the last two meetings just the link so that people can go to, from Facebook to our website or to YouTube. To watch the meetings. Um but as we're streaming live right on Facebook, it's just not an option right now.
As we sit right now, it's not supported.
Are we?
And our system is brand new and throughout this entire building. So to put in a new system would be a significant cost.
But did it, did I understand you're right though? They can go to the website.
Yes, it's still right on the front page of the website.
And stream from the website.
And on YouTube, yes, it is always streamed. However, that being said, today was not the case. Because YouTube was down and it goes to our website through YouTube. So right after the work meeting, YouTube went down and we couldn't stream. Now, of course, we still recorded it, so tomorrow we will post it to YouTube. It will then be available on our website and on YouTube, but. Today YouTube was not.
But this is a nice opportunity though to look at possibilities for streaming that may be better suited than Facebook is for that purpose. To have a streaming site that has a dedicated forum, for instance. Is a better option if one is looking for effective streaming. So I I, you know, costs, I have no idea. But it's a nice opportunity to look at some other opportunities uh for streaming or just to consider the fact that. You know, it is available, it's just available in alternate sources.
I think we'd be by.
It's still available.
Feedback is, it's available.
Yeah, we haven't had negative comments about it. I mean, most people, we just thought they moved right to.
This app, we could get it on Snapchat. That'd be a whole difference.
Just like I say, I I'm certainly not interested in redoing our brand new system to to accommodate that when there is still an avenue for that to happen. Granted that YouTube is actually up functioning, but that's technology. You're gonna have those issues from time to time that prevent that and it's and it's inconvenient. But again, those are things that are beyond the city's control. We do everything possible to to make that available to our residents and we'll continue to do so. But there has to be some limitations and there always will be limitations on how we're able to to make that available.
Well, going straight from our system to Facebook was never the case. We've actually had to go around that from the very beginning.
Yeah, we've always gone.
We were told from by our vendor initially, you can't do it to you to do Facebook. Through all the resources we have here in the city, we were able to figure that out. But now they've changed the protocol again. So maybe we can figure it out again, but you know, right now it's not.
There are companies that they have worked with that they're able to still stream, but um Extron just isn't one of them yet. So it doesn't mean that in the future that won't change, but who knows, we may have something else in place or we really may like the way that things are working. So we'll just.
We just communicate that these are the avenues if you want, if you wanna have that ability to livestream, these are the the ways that you'll have to get to it.
And I think, you know, we've talked about this past, I think sending it to the city website, in all honesty, is probably a better option. Because then all the resources that we that we as council members utilize, you know, our agendas, our packets, all those are gonna be right there available for them to use utilize as well. And so I think, you know, this might be an opportunity disguised to see if this is a better fit for our community and and putting people in a better place to get the information that they need.
Well, and it will offer them kind of uninterrupted streaming. They really can sit there and watch it and not be interrupted by all the comments that are coming through constantly. And then that way, once they're done watching it, they can submit a comment through the email that's provided. I think that could be better, um because then you don't have all the side conversations going on and then they're missing very key points about the discussion, so.
And the other element is those comments that are submitted can then be, I would assume, displayed in some manner with the answer attached. And it also decreases the chances of miscommunication as everybody uh in the forum. Yeah, the which ought to be the accepted answers. You know, when you have a multitude of everybody giving answers, and I'm using air quotes on purpose. It just lends itself to miscommunications and uh of course, some residents are gonna be more inclined to believe their neighbor. Over the city answer when in fact, the city answer in this case may be the accurate answer. So I think it also just clears up rumor and innuendo and all of those things that swirl around. Uh in lieu of, here's the answer to that particular question.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy, but I think there is still a little, at least a little bit of a misconception that.
We can answer.
That we're going to, that we're watching and going to answer or that somebody from the city is is going to answer during those, which which never has been nor will it ever be the case. Therefore, this is the proper way to have those those questions answered.
And in that void of not answering because it wouldn't be appropriate, that void gets filled with again misinformation. And so you're just perpetuating misinformation over and over again, so.
Yes, we even tried adding to our notice when it starts that council do not watch this during the meeting. They're actually conducting the meeting, they don't respond live.
I think it's a good reaction.
I would hate watching myself during the meeting.
I wonder, I wonder.
I need to sit, we're sitting on our circle back around. You sit like this. Oh, um I guess I could. Do you wanna pull up the the, it's the legislative priorities? That slide's in there and it's listed as that.
We'll wait for that, let's just.
Since I'm talking, I might as well. So just, you guys received the list of what. Our idea was of what your focus would be during the legislative session. You got that at the end of the strategic planning meeting. I just wanna know if you've had a time to look at that, if there's anything that you would add, if there's anything you would remove, any changes that you wanted to make. Obviously wasn't here, so I don't know exactly how much discussion there was. Um Cody was nice enough to stand up and deliver it all for me, so.
There was no discussion.
I really appreciate, wow, you're that good. Good job. So we were, we're good. Um.
We gave him a very, very limited time.
So. Based off of some of the bills that will be going forward this year and of course, some of the things that we continuously. Meet with our legislators on such as the contaminated soils, transportation. I just want to know if there is anything on this list that you would change, add, reduce, remove.
I do, Brad. It's true today that the the mining bill might be. I'm sure today that the, the, the mining bill wanna be back up on the hill again.
Yes, and that's it, of course, we'll be all of that one.
Do we, I, I mean, I know last couple of years, local patrol and, and who has zoning authority has been kind of a big deal. Do we expect that to be a big deal again this year?
It is a big deal every year.
Always, how is there? Your view tonight and prove that they're watching to see if people embracing that. And if it's not being embraced, they're gonna
They'll fix it for us.
Right.
So Senator Adrick has the next piece to that, at least, it's not the next piece to that, but it's the funding mechanism, are we discussing about mechanism for that? Are we in it, discuss that?
It will be a topic of discussion.
Cause that's kind of the big missing component.
Let's listen, Harley, uh, Harley took a tuck today off this year. It was year-round and, uh, we don't see that softening at all. We plan on meeting on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Fridays, three sessions this year.
Under economic development, if the opportunity arises, I think always we should be pushing parking structures.
Yeah.
Yes, and we've actually already met twice.
We are official already.
Good, cause on the west side, we have the land, it would be smart of us to find the best and highest use, which is going up, not out.
And there's some cities have already gotten chip and all that, so it, it's opened the, the door.
So that's what we're using in our discussions is you've offered it, so open it to everybody and give everybody an equal opportunity for the dollars.
So we'll update the list, make sure you have that email out to yourself, there's, kind of refreshing the line about turn the track when you start having fifteen hundred bills this year, we'll be watching. Uh, I wanna go to Wendy, cause she wants to have a parade.
We hopefully get to have a parade.
Wait, what? Next week, wants to have a parade next week.
Um, as Councilmember Orr mentioned, our, our SL Monarchs are the Western Conference Champions, they'll be playing Sunday in Louisville, City.
Louisville, Kentucky.
Um, and if they win Sunday, we will be hosting a parade in their honor. So we're working with RSL on coordinating that effort. Um, you'll be here at City Hall, it's not about RSL.
Just around the parking lot?
Yeah, basically, just around the, you wrote, um, we're planning on three o'clock on Wednesday, so if you are available. That may fly a little bit as we look at school schedules and how things work out, but that's our plan right now is Wednesday afternoon.
We wish them all tomorrow.
Hopefully have a parade.
Yep.
I would love to have a championship.
Yep.
Wendy might as well keep on going, let's talk about Harriman.
We have new royalty. This is always kind of a bittersweet moment for us because we get really, um, attached to our royalty, they hope, our events snap out quite a bit at events. So we said goodbye to Jade and Montana and Sabina and we said hello to Samantha Barney in the center is our new Ms. Harriman. Paige Welsh, who is on this, my side. Um, she's the first attendant and Danielle Fisher is our second attendant, they won't be attending the December meeting for an official presentation. But you'll see them at events and activities in the next coming weeks, so just wanted you to be aware of that. Very talented and bright young, young women.
They always are and they look forward to having them.
Yep, they're gonna be great.
Some of the things I have is, one thing's kinda dropped off the radar a little bit and to that, Jer, it's not here, is the R-CRA for, uh, tax increments. And there was a lot of questions asked from the county and after you guys had a meeting with them. So, well, send an email out tomorrow to all of you, I wanna clean up and make it more like a, more professional staff report. This is the raw version, uh, questions the county was asking that we answered. And then we'll fill in the other information that you guys have asked and get it back to you. So I'll give Jared a copy of that so that, uh, whatever else that he missed out on tonight, packet-wise, so. Let you know that we're trying to stay on top of that, but with anything else going on this last month and a half. I know that Jared wanted to meet with several board members who need by far a service area, has not had the time to put that together either as well, so. We're just trying to move that forward and, and take your directions, you know, and get close to them, so. Uh, like I talked about the May shoot opening, uh, it's not without, since you amended the budget, uh, with the whole goal in the process now. Uh, we've had some applicants, but we've kinda waited until you make sure you're fine with it. And then we'll really get after it, but I'm looking for two council members to be a part of the interview process. Probably the previous panel, but I want some of the key staff here, it's a very important, uh, position. Uh, it's high on the radar here, so we wanna make sure you get the right candidate. HR, and we'll flush out, go through the resumes right now and I can say there's gonna be a lot that think they want the job, they have no experience. We want someone that's done some great things. And I can tell you right now, we already had a couple of applicants that's some great things in the state Utah, so they're interested in coming here. So it's, uh, very optimistic about the opportunity. So what I'm saying is when we schedule these appointments, you're gonna be a little flexible to come in. Do you wanna let me know now or hold your peace and let me know the email or?
I'll, depending on scheduling, I'm willing to help out. I just need a little notice.
Okay.
Yeah, I am too. I have some, I mean, I mean, I think we're willing to help out.
So you guys wanna bet out that for yourself and let me know, um, who you want to be there, cause some of you have strong experiences.
Do you want the same two? I think you're gonna have better, oh, do you want the, so you have the same consistent panels?
Absolutely, cause when you go through rounds, we are, I'm ready, adamant about when you, particularly key positions, that's everything from entry level on up, I did two rounds of interview.
Do, do you, do you right now have a anticipated timeline of when that might be? Cause that might help us.
Well, we're gonna, we push out hard in there and notice, make sure, you know, place some resumes and then I would like to start interviewing within a week. But that's, I haven't been really in no hurry. I wanna make sure I find the right person. And so if we go through a round, we'll see if they're willing to just keep on, it's gonna last until, uh, until COVID is filled, until COVID is filled, so.
Yeah.
We let that wide open to make sure if it takes a year, it takes a year. If, I don't think it is, be, will, because we've already had some applicants that are, and people contact us. They're very interested, very involved in the state economics of the state, so.
We don't want it to take a year. We need somebody here before, someone good in here before.
You say potentially within a week, but would we really be ready to start interviewing, be, anybody by the end of next week?
No, not next week, it'll be the week after.
And that's the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we'll do one Thanksgiving day and the day after.
Really see their dedication.
That way there.
Hey, I'm getting a little
So the question is, is
I'm gonna have to go to Thanksgiving and I don't have to rush off.
Right.
So first weekend to December.
Yeah, the question is, is are you real, are you really gonna, are you gonna try and target before Thanksgiving? Are we realistically looking at the week after Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
I would prefer to see if I can get something first, but it'll depend on what process is happening, so. So sort of your calendar, the last week of November, more than the third week of November.
I think
First week of December.
Yeah.
I, I would say the week of Thanksgiving possibly Monday or Tuesday is all. You should get people traveling and then the week after that, and the first week of December and the second week of December.
Cause you should come the twenty-fifth through the twenty-first.
There is no week after Thanksgiving.
This one is not the twenty-first. I, I think, I think maybe if you sent out an email, kind of, that says, this is why I'm looking at, and then let us answer through that and then just determine who do you best to get to sit on that. Do you, do you guys think that's okay?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, what, uh
You might even have Shelley do a doodle poll like she's done for a couple of other things for availability.
Better, better, look together, sure helps that a lot.
Cause, cause that might really help narrow it down for you guys of really who has the availability you're looking for to keep the process moving.
I know, I left the calendar, trying to see if we could even, I'm just thinking long this week, but our calendars were this week and I know things that stuck in brief, could either of the last two days. Okay. But, uh, who'll be on that team? Be Tammy and Wendy and Gordon and Heather and myself and Travis and two council. And I have a question about being too big and then everyone said to me, said, no, this depends on being too big, be thrivers. And, you know, Tammy has had experience with marketing and economic sales and so does Wendy, so we felt that it has some strengths and personalities. And also in the true
And I have bought a lot of things, so I'm literally qualified.
Well, Nicole's had experience with, you know, the two, so, you know, that's, if you, you know, give me heads up, that's Okay?
Something's good.
Which really good news is one of the last time, sitting for you is our trophy. And I had the wonderful experience last Friday afternoon of going to Salt Lake with Chief Troy Carr and Tammy, Wendy and Travis and Christie to go see our plaque. And we literally circled the block somewhere between
I don't park underground, okay?
Yeah, we're just, I just don't
Another thing, Jerome!
You never know when something can happen.
We're about up, we're not up, so we literally ran in. I literally sat down maybe ten seconds and they called our name, got it, we're in our picture.
We circled the block three times.
That's just called efficiency.
We're sticking to driver, we circled the block.
Well, I told them, just get out and I'll wait.
He will ever, ever
After the subway thing, I, I don't know why I'm surprised, but it's just another one down the hole.
Never do well in traffic in Salt Lake, so.
No, and I just want you to know that traffic in Harriman is not that fast. Wow, turned a corner and the whole street
I laughed until I cried.
Pushing transit people around.
It was quite
I know.
We was back out here, up there, back and back here by about five thirty-one. It didn't use any lights, so it's
Well, congratulations, well done.
Yeah, uh, part of the background on that is, yeah, a lot of people got awarded, but we was only, uh, we was the top government agency in the mid-group of, of companies. And, uh, some are, I won't say who, articles out there, you can look for yourself, uh, in their review, you know, last, it's last Sunday. And, uh, in our group, we placed twelfth in that mid-range group of companies. So we, like I said before, we, we, there's always things we can improve on, absolutely, and we're gonna look for those opportunities. But it does say something about what culture we grew here, uh, definitely with our employees. And what's been interesting more, our employees have lived, worked somewhere else and come to Harriman. We're one of the main agency to this government agency, they were our strongest, most serving. So that says something to that as well, so. Um, and actually Jackie's one of those, I was a, tell a great comment about their jobs here and what they're doing, so.
Well, and as we look at economic development, these are the subtle elements that bring employers here as well. It's not simply about checking all of the obvious boxes, it's also about creating a nice lifestyle for their employees. And so much of that is not only the culture of the city, uh, City Hall, but the culture of Harriman too. You know, the more that we come together as a community, the more chances we have of bringing in high-quality employers, which we need.
Yeah, I couldn't, so, as good as that, um, trending just happened today. Well, you know, uh, Sheldon Howard, he's worked for government and come here and he loves the culture. We're gonna have a whole one over again. And so that culture, but we know our job here, with our team here, we talk about it all the time, the culture of how it plays into our community, our city. And it has to start here, so. It's been a great journey, but, uh, maybe he knows anything about me, we're not, we're not that, we, we talk about it every week, literally every single week, we talk about how we're doing, our culture, where we can improve, so. Uh, it's, like I said, it's been a great honor, uh, to achieve this, let employees spoke to enable for them. That's all I have for tonight.
I heard a vicious rumor that we're not going to need a closed session today.
We're not.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Let's end on a high note, that nonsense. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.